Okay. Let's call this being our standing for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the plan of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's hear the roll call of the members present, please.
Councilmember Whitton.
I'm here.
Councilmember Conover.
Mr. President.
Councilmember Biggs.
Here.
Councilmember Graham.
Here.
Councilmember Justin.
Here.
Councilmember Paparad.
Here.
And Councilmember Reavis.
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. Let's hear the first reading, please.
Notice the taxpayers of proposed additional appropriations. Notice is hereby given to taxpayers of Porter County, Indiana, that the proper legal officers of Porter County will meet in the Porter County Government and Administration Building at 155 Indiana Avenue in Valparaiso, Indiana on December 6, 2015, at 5:30 p.m. to consider the following additional appropriations in excess of the county budgets for the year 2016 and to track and transact any further business which might come before the council. General Fund Election Board, $3710 equipment, $50,000. Sheriff, $1130 overtime, $47,469.82. Cankey Valley Historical Society Collier Lodge Grant Fund, $3120 consultants, $15,000. Clerk Era Incentive Fund, $4410 office equipment, $1,304.98. Parks NAR Grant Fund, $3950 contractual services, $16,500. Tax sale fees, $3950 contractual, $28,810. And PCC RVC Tourism, $3550 water and sewage, $1,000. $3950 contractual, $10,040 D-10 buildings, $20,04510 data processing, $2,500. Taxpayers appearing at such meetings shall have a right to be heard thereon. The additional appropriations as finally made will be referred to the Department of Local Government Finance, which will make a written determination as to the sufficiency of funds to support the appropriations made within 15 days of receipt of a certified copy of the action taken, Vicky Urbana, auditor of Porter County, published November 23, 2016, in the Chester Tribune.
Thank you very much. Approval of the 2017 budget meetings and October 24 council meeting. What's your pleasure?
Move.
Motion second on both, I assume?
Yes.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I believe that Councilman Reavis has asked for the floor as we get into this, so Mr. Reavis, keep it brief and roll.
I'll make it brief. In light of an event on November 7th, I just feel as the councilman from the 2nd District from the city of Portage that I needed to make a statement and stand, stand up for the people. I believe in good government. I fought for that up here and I'll continue to fight for that. So I'm gonna read a statement that, that's already out there, but I just wanna read it for the record. Porter County continues to be one of the more attractive counties in Indiana to live, work, and/or do business in. We take pride in our quality of life that is made available to all. In order to maintain that quality of life, it takes a constant commitment and effort by our leaders and citizens. Porter County is home to the 3rd largest city in northwest Indiana, the city of Portage. Portage is a key asset to the vibrancy and continued growth of Porter County with lakefront access and internal, and international port, steel mills, a growing industrial park, great public schools, and great people. As the council representative from the city of Portage, I truly believe that as Portage goes, so too does the county for the good or the bad. On November 17, a dark cloud that has been gathering moved in over the city of Portage and into Porter County. James Snyder, the mayor of Portage, was arrested and indicted on a number of bribery charges as mayor and an IRS obstruction scheme that had started years and years ago and involved his personal life, his multiple business ventures, and his political campaign. During this time, it appears that James Snyder had broken the public's trust. Not only do I feel for his family, but also, but also for all the hardworking employees of the city of Portage and our residents who now have to bear the burden of what could be a long drawn out trial. Speaking from the perspective of your, of your county councilman, the county is attempting to collaborate with the city of Portage on a number of different projects. With the construction of a new animal shelter, the city of Portage now has the opportunity to bring their animals to a no-kill shelter. The county is beginning to work with the city on drainage issues on Will Creek Road. The county is considering building a new North County complex. The county is looking to partner with the city regarding upgrades to our public safety radio system. Having a mayor under federal indictment for bribery and other charges makes it very difficult, if not possible, for other elected officials and businesses to business with him. The residents of Portage and Porter County should not have to suffer the consequences from the actions of one man. If James Snyder truly cares for the residents of this great city, then he should step aside and immediately resign, focus on his family and trial, and allow the healing to begin. Porter County and the city of Portage is a great place to live, work, and/or do business, and as an elected official, I will always strive to improve the quality of life that we are accustomed to and will fight against those that threaten it. Thank you, Dan.
Roll call, Jeremy. And as, as we all know, that's, that's been in the paper, so, as an attorney, I mean, everybody is innocent until it's time that they're proven guilty, and certainly Mayor Snyder deserves his day in court. If any of the allegations that are against him are in fact true, and he knows whether they're true or not, and I would echo Jeremy Reavis's sentiment, he should resign because he has betrayed the trust of the people that put him in office. Public corruption is intolerable at any level. Hopefully those allegations are untrue and he will, he will be found not guilty at trial, but time will tell. Okay. Fourth spirit of court, number three. Judge Jen contacted me and she had a conflict, but there's not much here. Transfer of $500 from legal to furniture and $100 from legal to office fixtures. What's your pleasure?
Move.
Second. One, of course, is to purchase a new printer stand. The other one is to repair the arm of a chair.
It's interesting.
Really? It's come to that. Well, is that a special chair or should we take the $100? Should we take the $100 with the new chair? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Tell Judge Jen she gets her chair repaired. Porter Circuit Court. Judge Harper. We have a transfer of $400 from care and patients and inmates to mental health drug court. Transfer $70 from care of patients and inmates and $3,260 from care of patients and inmates to family house. What's your pleasure?
Move.
Second. Motion second on all these transfers.
Yes.
Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Transfers approved.
Thank you very much. Happy holidays.
You too.
You too.
Memorial Opera House. We've got a transfer of $2,500 from other services to food and groceries. This is for reimbursement of food and grocery expenses throughout the year, reimbursement for purchases needed for product costs related to productions and concerts. What's your pleasure?
Move.
Second. There are motions on the second on the floor. Questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Transfers approved.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
Maintenance. We have a general fund commissioners, $2,000 from household embedding, uh, the uniforms and clothing for uniforms and buyout from vendor, vendor from weekly service. Employees now wash their own. I'll make the motion. Do they fix chairs? Motion is second on the floor. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah, I said. Have a good holiday. Veterans, transfer $750 to Veterans Assistance for donation targeted to homeless veterans and new creation for medication and medical supplies. What's your pleasure?
Move.
Motion in a couple of seconds. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Transfers approved.
Thank you. May I make one comment?
You certainly may.
Dan, I had a commitment today from Wendy Gates, the owner of Culvers', and she's gonna, I have a substantial donation again, and I'm working with Vicky and Tony. That'll go right back into the general fund to replace that money, so.
Perfect.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Treasure additional, $28,810 to contractual to pay invoices, tax sale fees. What's your pleasure?
Move.
Second. Motion is second on the floor. Is there discussion?
Uh, is this commissioner sales or?
Not yet.
No, no, this is just the tax sales.
It's the last time we've had a commissioner sale. Probably been years and years, right?
I think there was one in '14.
Yeah, two years ago.
13.
14. 14. It was before I took office. And I think they're thinking about having another commissioner.
They are, and I asked for a printout of all the properties. The treasurer's sale and our treasurer was kinda like, send those to me. It's usually what conjures up a commissioner's sale and we can't unload them for tax taxes.
Exactly.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Uh, Councilmember Conover.
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Councilmember Paparad.
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Reavis.
That's why y'all look this way. I'm gonna do a maity on that one, but.
And Councilmember Whitton.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Thank you. On the pregnant pause in the speech. Uh, plan and commission. Uh, $2,000 from consultants to legal notices, request transfer for the public. Hearing cases, legal notices published in the paper. What's your pleasure?
Move.
Second. We have a motion is second on the floor. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Have a good night. Good holiday. Highway Department. A few small transfers. $1,000 from gas and lube to hourly for part-time clerical to the end of the year. $500 from gas and lube to equipment or vehicles for chainsaw repairs. Uh, $4,500 batuminous to auto truck and equipment for vehicle repairs. What's your pleasure?
Move.
Motion.
Couple of motions, couple of seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Have a good holiday.
Thank you.
Health Department. I-N-L-H-D-T-A. Transfer of $1,000 to med and dental with training education to cover staff expenses for educational seminars to the end of the year, not to mention a transfer of $500 from medical and dental to fight for the cover insufficient amount in line item through 123116. And then, uh, Health General, transfer of $12,000 bucks from med and dental to salaries to cover budgets worth all due to other, excuse me, under appropriation in October 15. What's your pleasure?
Move.
Second. Motion is second on these transfers. Questions?
Yes. Um, you're doing dental?
That's the line item, 2410, called medical and dental.
Okay.
No, we're not doing dental about that.
Cause I got, I got a bad tooth period.
Come on down.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Jen's gonna follow you down with that.
Please take.
Did he get close? Thank you.
All right. He turns back. Coroner. We got a transfer of $150 bucks from the coroner, uh, medical and hospital, um, to dues and subscriptions for yearly Indiana State Coroner's Association membership. What's your pleasure?
Move.
Couple of motions, second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Ways and Measures. We have a general fund, Ways and Measures, transfer of $200 from training and add to furniture fixtures over 100 for new furniture. None of that repair business. Uh, $350 for training and add to small tools, for new tools, not even repairing the chainsaw. Uh, $350 bucks from training and add to uniforms and clothing, for clothing, as the name would indicate. Um, I'll make the motion.
Motion approved.
Second. We have a motion, been a motion and then a second. Um, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And by the way, I was also contacted by Ways and Measures, they had a conflict and asked if we could, and if it's so, let me say yes. Uh, same thing with 4D, general fund 4D, $100, appearing $100 dollars from office supplies to hourly to cover hourly pay for remaining year. What's your pleasure?
Move.
Second. Motion is second on the floor. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Parks and Recreation, National Association Realtors Park Grant, $16,500 to contractual, reimbursable grant for development and delivery of master plan need survey, and then also out of the number broading, a transfer of $7750 bucks to hourly, the land purchase for rinked-out cross gardens and land acquisition.
Move.
Second. Motion in a couple of seconds. Discussion? Let's get a roll call on this, please.
Councilmember Biggs.
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Councilmember Paparad.
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitton.
Yes.
And Councilmember Conover.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Then we have a cune cap, uh, sorry, that's wrong. You're done.
I'm done.
It's like that, it was over. Uh, let's go to Porter County Commissioners. We're gonna pull something out of here. I understand. Um, we're gonna pull something out first. We have a series of transfers, but I wanna deal with one of them individually. If you looked down the list, there's a transfer of $5,000 from salary to contractual services for legal fees. In seeing this, I contacted or was contacted by Scott Quirr, and I asked, cause I was somewhat concerned about whether he was running out of money or if this is part of the legal departments organization that we've kind of been talking about. Yeah, it's not. It's something a bit different, and it's my understanding that Commissioner Evans, and I want you to correct me if I'm mistaken, Mr. Quirr, but Commissioner Evans has made this request, um, has contemplated to reimburse him for legal fees that he proposes, uh, that he incurred, or I don't know if this is all of them, as part of the federal government's investigation of him, uh, through his commissioner's position. Now, is that correct so far?
Yes.
And then, in hearing that, of course, then I spoke with our attorney, Harold Harper and many of you as well, uh, and Harold can chime in here at any time that he feels necessary, but it's my understanding of reading the statute that, um, the, that Commissioner Evans in fact may make this request and that the county shall reimburse him, in fact, if he has been, there's been, his, the investigation is closed and there's no indictment. Now, as your chairman, for now, um, and even when I'm not chairman, I think we need to know specifically if in fact the investigation is closed. I think that's important for us to know, uh, and that there in fact will be no indictment. So what I would like to do is I would like to instruct our attorney, Attorney Harper, to make a request of the federal government, to ask for a status on that investigation and if in fact it is closed. And if it is closed, we can address this at our January meeting, and if it is not closed, well, we could still address it at our January meeting, but slightly different. Um, so Harold, would you do that?
I will do that.
And by the way, there is a process by which you can do, and I've done this before. There's a formal request that you can make of the U.S. Attorney's Office to ask for the status of an investigation. Sometimes you get a letter of no indictment, or at least something very similar to that. Sometimes you get something that says, we're not indicting at this time, but we may in the future. Sometimes you get something that says, fully macro, this is anything but closed. So, um, that's a rest generalization, by the way. But I think until we know the answer to that question, we can take no further action. So I would suggest that we table that request until our next meeting and give Harold an opportunity to make that request on our behalf. Any problem with that?
No. Do you think this could be done timely by our January meeting, when you've had such a?
Let me just, let me just put it to you this way. I believe that Harold Harper could go to his office and make the request tomorrow.
Oh, I believe that.
But I'm not entirely sure how quickly we'll get a response, because quite frankly, if you put your, I mean, and I don't know the status of the investigation. I don't know the particulars of it. I don't, I don't care to know if this request is coming in front of us now. We need to know at least whether it's closed. But they may be at a place in, if the AUS, or the AUSA that's handling this, may be at a place where they're not sure where they're at, you know? They're still compiling. Um, or they may be done. And I, and I think, and I would suspect that the timing of our response is probably gonna be directly contingent upon where they're at. So if we come back in January and we don't have an answer, well, we'll table it again, or not on table. Is that correct?
Correct.
Harold, you okay with that?
I, I am, and I agree with that, that assessment and reading of this statute, you know, I've talked about that.
And I, my assumption would be is that if, when Harold puts in his request, if he puts in there that this is probably gonna be dealt with again, that the, I'm assuming at your first, uh, regular January meeting.
Right.
Uh, that kind of gives those departments a timeframe to get some sort of response and then that way they know that time's ticking and we need some response for you guys to be able to do your job pursuant to the statute.
Thank you. Scott, can I get a motion to table this transfer of $5,000 from salaries to contractual for legal fees?
Move to table.
Second.
And a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Dan, well, discussion on that, just.
Yes, go ahead.
Vote's over by the time.
Sorry. It's such a juicy topic. I, I don't wanna cut you off.
He has not been reimbursed to this time on any.
Not to mine, I'll.
Not as far.
You mean reimbursed from the county for?
From the county for attorney fees relative to the FBI investigation.
Not that I'm aware of.
Not any requests that I remember.
Request, but it doesn't.
I think with, I think with Councilman Reavis, I think what Councilman Reavis may be alluding to is that the commissioners could have done something if they had funds in legal, I suppose, but I think that.
There are no funds in legal, uh, so I don't believe that.
All right.
To answer your question directly, and I'm, I'm not attempting to be invasive at all, I don't, I do not believe so. And, uh, if you look at our general fund or any of the budgets, the, even the money that's paying the legal department's coming out of a contractual line item, it's not coming out of an attorney fee line item. We changed that when we did the budgets this year for next year, but as it sits right now, money is not sitting in the attorney fee item. And frankly, that invoice would have, would then have to go to the auditor's office and they would have to process it. So there would be, the commissioner's office doesn't write checks, so I do not believe that that has occurred.
Now, the auditor's, that occurred?
The last, um, payment that we showed for him as like a reimbursement was back in 2013.
And what was that for?
It was reimbursement for lodging for a conference or some of that.
Thank you. All right. Okay. Any other calls on that? All right, so, that's that. Uh, transfer of $9,000 to contractual services for Museum United Way program. $80,000 from postage, a lot of postage, to contractual services, jail security project payments to finish the year. $15,000 from postage to longevity. $150,000 from gas, fuel, and lube to longevity. Uh, that's our payment for second longevity payment. Uh, then there's a transfer of $10,000 from co-op assessed benefit to telephone. $20,000 from equipment to telephone. $20,000 from building liability comp to telephone. A lot of telephone. $3,000 from veterans burial to telephone. We're not shorting the veterans burial, are we?
No, each veteran is $100 towards that, and it was more than enough to make to the end of the year.
Okay. Uh, for internet and telephone annual service fees, what's your pleasure on these?
Move.
There are motions.
Second.
A second, I assume on all, except for the one on the table. Uh, discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Cune cap development. Transfer of $10,000 from roads and taxiways to power. A shortage in fund to pay electric, we don't want that. $20,000 from roads and taxiways to water and sewage. Fund depleted, we also don't want that. Transfer from, seated, well, excuse me, second. What's your, what's your pleasure to table?
We gotta page the power bill.
Motion.
We have a motion and a second on both.
Yes.
Discussions. Any reason why these were short?
Well, I think they've always been short. That's why we did some of the budget changes when you guys did our budgets went through. We moved around power, telephone, sewer, water, because they just weren't enough to make it to the end of the year.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Seated, Commissioners' Projects, transfer of $40,000 from maintenance to power, power line item depleted. Uh, $60,000 from maintenance agreements to water and sewage, water line items are depleted. Man, is there anything working in this county?
Well, there are working stuff.
$135,000 from maintenance to contractual services, jail, medical contract, line item depleted. What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
There are motions, there are second.
Second.
Second. Uh, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Have a good night, Mr. [inaudible]. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Cankey Valley Historical Society Collier Grant Fund additional, $15,000 bucks to consultants, uh, PC Commissioners in Cankey Valley Historical Society received a grant of $15,000 for the historic preservation plan of Collier Lodge and Couch through the Indiana Community and Rural Affairs. Akra, I like to call it.
Move.
There are motions and a second on the floor. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'm sorry, give me a roll call.
Uh, Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Councilmember Paparad.
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitton.
Yes.
Councilmember Conover.
And Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Seven present.
Tourism, inkeeper tax collections. Additional $1,000 bucks, water and sewage, because Indiana Water has been underbilling us. That's interesting. $10,000 to contractual for the Porter County Bike Rock Maintenance, new bike signs and postage. $20,000 to buildings for parking and asphalt seal coating, crack sealing and striping done in '16. HVAC rooftop unit is broken and needs replacement. And then an additional $2,500 bucks to data processing equipment for QuickBooks, point of sales hardware and front desk. What's your pleasure?
Move.
Motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Discussion?
What information did Indiana Miracle Water provide you to justify?
You know, it's been an interesting 10 years. First, we were underbilled for sewage. And we got that resolved with the town of Porter. And then we found out that we were underbilled for water, we didn't justify what it was. So, we're 10 years into a building and we still have no good feel in terms of the overall water usage and sewage bill. And I think we finally were able to adjust it for 2017, but it's, you have to go on historical records, but they weren't able to give us an answer for that.
Well, if, did somebody make a motion?
Yes.
If they make part of the motion that they provide that information to you and depending on your opinion or thought on what justification they have given you as to whether or not this should be paid.
Okay. Yeah, we're religion.
I would like to do that. Well, I've been underpaid, I've been under.
I'm not an Indiana Water expert, that seems a little odd. So, we have a motion, a second on the floor, with a motion to amend to make a contingent upon Indiana Water providing an explanation as to the underbilling.
The second would confer with that.
So, then amended motion, and second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Jessen?
Yes.
Councilmember Papad?
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis?
Yes.
Councilmember Witten?
Yes.
Councilmember Conover?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
And Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Just to touch on that for a second, because I'm not quite sure how that all works. So, you say going forward, you feel like you have a fix to it, so we know what we're going to be billed and know what we're going to have to pay?
We had a better feel for it. What was challenging for us is we still needed to go through the summer months and figure out what that usage was. And so, we have to go based on history. And so, we feel like we've got this under control, but it's weird to be 10 years into a building and have both issues with both sewage. Town of Porter was charging us residential. And when we looked into it legally, we had, they could have gone back the whole time, but they figured out a particular formula. So, we just have to go on historical records and our heaviest season is a critical component to that.
So, the $1,000 is really just kind of an agreeable amount that they came up with, that we agreed with?
Well, no, what it is, is the increase happened and we'd already had our budget approved. And so, we're running short in that line item because of the increase.
And I assume, I mean, here's the thing, this isn't general fund money. So, I assume your board has looked at this and has some understanding of looking forward, right? I mean, the fact of the matter is, if Indiana Water comes back and says we're $30,000 short, guess what? They gotta find the money. So.
On the record.
Yeah. It's not our problem, it's the tourism board's problem.
I don't know the utility, huh?
Yeah.
Can we get a roll call, please?
I believe we already have.
We have a discussion, answer the roll call?
No, he just, we had already voted, had roll call, and then he's.
Sheriff, and then we're done.
Great, thanks, have a good holiday.
You too now, see you later, Lauren. Come on, man, sure. General Fund Sheriff. $16,172 to overtime for specialty services, overtime reimbursement for September. $30,000 to 11:30 overtime to pay out all 2016 specialty service overtime, covering October, November, December. All reimbursements from these agencies will go back to the general fund, including unused additional. And then a transfer of $1,200 bucks from boards to hourly to cover sheriff process service for the remaining of the year. What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
With a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Discussion? Hearing none, let's get a roll call on these, please.
Councilmember Papad?
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis?
Yes.
Councilmember Witten?
Yes.
Councilmember Conover?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
And Councilmember Jessen?
Yes.
Seven to zero.
2016 Form 144, Sheriff. $138,112 to 14262. Scott, would you come up here? So, it's my understanding that today the Commissioners signed the contract with the Sheriff for '16 and '17, correct? And '16, so what we're dealing here with the 2016 144 is basically a retroactive to the beginning of 2016?
Correct.
From 139,112 to 142062.
Correct.
Correct? And I know that we've had some discussions about the sinazium, myself and Attorney Harper. And I think that there was some question or thought about the interpretation of the statute and the Sheriff's compensation. And since we've elected not to go, or we've elected away from the option where he gets a portion of the tax collected, we're doing the compensation contract which puts him on par with the prosecutor's salary. Is that a good way to really water down?
It is.
Harold, you agree with that?
I would agree with that. In lieu of paying him, as we would a regular employee out of the general fund and with the Sheriff being entitled to those tax collection warrant fees, the county's opted to enter into a contract. And I think the long and short of it is, the county is ahead financially with the contract, even given the maximum minimum.
All right. What's your pleasure with the 144 request?
Move.
With a motion?
Second.
And a second. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Reavis?
Yes.
Councilmember Witten?
Yes.
Councilmember Conover?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen?
Yes.
And Councilmember Papad?
Yes.
Seven to zero.
For the record, Councilman Biggs growled.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Growl, I think.
He's just sick.
County user fees, Sheriff, transfer $3,500 bucks to uniform and clothing, from uniform and clothing to hourly. Cover hourly pay for main gear. And then there's a community corrections transfer, $20,000 for medical and dental, not a good night for dental, to household and bedding, to cover shortages, updating bedding, inmate uniforms, inmate population increases during the '16, needing extra household supplies. What is your pleasure with these?
Move for all.
With a motion on the floor for all?
Second.
And a second. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Our clerk had a medical emergency, she can't be here, but she asked that we entertain her additional. Incentive fund additional request, $1,304.98 to office equipment over $100 to purchase upscaling equipment, computer and printer needs replacement. What's your pleasure? Go make some money. There's a motion on the floor, is there a second? I'll second it. Discussion? Hearing none, let's have ourselves a roll call.
Councilmember Witten?
Yes.
Councilmember Conover?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Jessen?
Yes.
Councilmember Papad?
Yes.
And Councilmember Reavis?
All I'm just going to do is some of these other people, we're obviously thinking, no.
Okay.
Do you want to change your thought so? All right, go on.
With Councilmember Reavis, that's a total of six to one in favor.
I just wish that somebody from the department.
Yes, you were.
All right. Six to one. I agree with you on that, by the way. 100%. And I already vended about that. Porter County Substance Abuse Tale from last meeting, drug free, community grant additional $190,000 to local government remittances for grant funding out of the community from the countermeasure fees received from the courts. What's your pleasure?
Move.
The motions are a second?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion?
Just a question.
Yeah.
Have the courts received that much money? It's a grant, though.
Anyone can jump in here and help out.
I withdraw my question.
No, I'm dying to hear how it gets answered.
Okay, I'm sorry, what was the question?
I just wondered, it says from out to the community for countermeasures fees. So, fees, has the court received that many?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
The court, yes, and the countermeasure fees?
Yeah.
She's asking if there's sufficient money to make this request. That's what she's asking.
As far as I know, yes.
And so, we'll move that question along to the auditor.
Yes, and there's the funds balance, and as you see, there's been nothing deposited yet in December. So, we do have $194,000.
Thank you. And this grant is divided three ways?
Four ways.
Four ways?
Mm-hmm. It's a treatment, let's see. It's divided into administration, justice, education, and intervention. Equally.
Okay, so, let's have ourselves a roll call.
Councilmember Conover?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen?
Yes.
Councilmember Papad?
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis?
Yes.
And Councilmember Witten?
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Thank you. Have a good holiday.
Thank you.
IPS, General Fund, ITS. Transfer $1,250 bucks from salaries to hourly. New hourly line item to pay part-time worker.
Move. Second.
Motion is second on the floor. Discussion? None? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Wonderful. Voters Registration, General Fund, transfer $24,984.61 overtime to hourly to cover payroll for the part-time election workers. And a transfer of $1,031.17 from lease purchase to other supplies. Transfer to pay for new phones from the IT department. What's your pleasure?
Move.
With a motion, applause, or a second?
Second.
A second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Your ayes have it? Election Board?
Yep.
$50,000 to equipment, pay, election systems and software, ESNS invoices. Transfer, much maligned topic. Transfer $7,000 from ballots and coding to polling place boards. $5,554.30 from equipment to polling place boards, excuse me, to cover payroll for poll workers. What's your pleasure?
What is the, explain the $50,000 for the ESNS?
Scott, you want to tie it on the ESNS thing, or Harold? I don't know if you're up to speed on it, Harold, but Scott and I were working on this for quite some time. And we've talked about this a lot, this is sort of the trailing bit.
This is the gift.
It's like a very private, it hits and dies.
Yes. Basically, when we decided, and I don't remember when, it's been a year. A year. We decided when we made those payments that we were going to make, we, the Council transferred or additional enough money to make that payment. Every payment that's coming from ESNS as it relates to the poll books is not budgeted anywhere. And that's, you specifically, as a board, wanted it to come one at a time as they came up. This is the, this is the next payment.
How many more payments do we have?
I think there's two.
Or is it at least two?
I think there's, there's just two. 17 and 18.
And this is for the e-poll books? And we used a couple of the e-poll books for early voting?
Yes.
Did we not?
Yes, we used, maybe six of them.
All right, refresh my memory on a couple of things. I don't want to beat a devil.
And next year, because it's an off-year with 2017, hopefully, because we already got something for Michigan City Schools, so, maybe not an off-year.
How many precincts will that cover, please?
Only two, so we're okay. But we're hoping with next year being an off-year that we're able to look at new equipment. Our contract with ESNS is up next year, so we'll be able to look at other vendors also. And they have let us know that if we want to upgrade any of our equipment, they will buy back the e-poll books at the fair market value of purchase price. And if we upgrade with ESNS, they'll buy it back for what we paid for them and upgrade us to the new ones.
So, that's the dangling carrot?
That's the dangling carrot?
Yes, Scott.
To further refresh everyone's memory, at the time that we made this decision, the Council had two choices. The choice, one choice was to pay off and buy out the e-poll books and send them back. The other option was to continue to pay them like this. The idea being that at the end of 2016.
We have some negotiation power, that was the whole decision. Not to cut the chase here, because you were telling the story very interestingly, but I.
I can tell, I had you, you were dangling on my every word.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, after I'm done with my question. So, as we sit here today.
Just tell me anything else.
How many, I just don't want this meeting to end, it's Bob's last, I want it to go on. The, how many e-poll books do we have at this time?
Eighty, yeah, eighty-nine, so it's eighty-nine.
Okay. Okay. And I know that, well, I want to get into that right now, that's a whole nother matter. Blowing places. Bob? And I realize I'm very naive on this, but I would say that the fair market value of a used computer is?
Exactly. That's the dangling carrot. If we go with the SNS, which we don't know.
It's a double S for here. I mean, it's a double, there's a dangling carrot for both of us. And one is, they'll give us fair market, or they'll give us cost for these to upgrade and stay with them. On the other hand, we could dump them, go elsewhere.
Call them one.
Yeah, so.
And there are other counties that do use the same e-poll book that we do that we could sell them to. But, like I said, if we're looking at new equipment next year, who knows what vendor we're going to go with?
It's not like they're overused.
No, exactly, they're like way new.
And I spoke with Attorney Van, a little bit about this as well, kind of strategizing into next year. So, we've got some moving parts here that we're going to be trying to get the best bang for the county. And I think there's a couple of potential for us to recover our loss and our hit and kind of move into. But I think this is going to be a bigger conversation, quite honestly, with the Election Board. And so, I suggested to them that we maybe get a small group together of representatives from the different boards and kind of iron out this whole thing globally and tackle a lot of different issues that are pending right now. All right, so, having said all that, can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
No.
Councilmember Jessen?
Yes.
Councilmember Papad?
We're doing both.
That was the motion.
And the transfer?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis?
Yes.
Councilmember Witten?
Yes.
Councilmember Conover?
Yes.
Six to one.
Thank you, guys.
Last one for me, when next?
This one?
This discussion, I mean, are they beginning discussions on this topic right away?
I'm hoping so, they're hoping just to bring it up at first.
Scott, you're part of this discussion. Well, not to, I mean, there's going to be some negotiations done, and I don't really want us to get into the particulars of it in a public meeting, because some of that stuff is strategy negotiations. But I have spoken again with Representatives of the Election Board, and we're going to move into this. And I intend to get at least a representative, or whoever our Council President is, we'll get a representative to the meetings, and we'll be involved in that. Yep, so we can kind of.
Thank you.
Get ahead of it before we're having to get behind it. Auditor?
He's just giving.
Hello.
Hello, Vicki.
I have a 144 change, basically, I just wanted.
So, the auditor has a 144. Go on, I'm going to go ahead and finish out this meeting.
Okay, very good.
Did you talk about your 144?
My pleasure. Basically, I just want to switch the salaries to two positions.
With a motion, a second on the floor.
There was a deny.
I have no motion. There was a motion for deny that was withdrawn, I assume the second confirms.
The second confirms.
So, Vicki, you're switching a couple of?
Yes. One of the positions is vacant, but it's in the process of being filled. And so, that's the one that I would like to bring down. The other one is a position that we're in the process of revising the job description. Remember budget hearing, we talked a lot about revising job descriptions. If there's any position in the auditor's office that needs a job description revision, it's the budget and financial.
So, you're basically taking one from the 39 to 38, one from 38 to 39?
Yes.
You guys clear on that? Motion to approve this, I assume there's a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Let's get a roll call.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen?
Yes.
Councilmember Papad?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Reavis?
Yes.
Councilmember Witten?
Yes.
Councilmember Conover?
Yes.
And Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Seven to zero.
That's a pass.
Thank you.
Second reading, please, Vicki.
As it has been determined that the county is appropriating more money than the appropriate annual budget, therefore, it is ordained by the Porter County Council, Porter County, Indiana, that for the expenses of the taxing unit, the filing additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the funds named and for the purposes specified, subject to the laws governing the same. General Fund, a total of $96,172.28. Collier Lodge Grants, $15,000. Clerk Era Incentive Fund, $1,304.98. Hertz NAR Grant Fund, $16,500. Tax sale fees, $28,810. TCC RBC, a total of $33,500. And that concludes second reading. I am sorry. I am sorry, Porter County Substance Abuse Council, a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. That concludes second reading.
What's your pleasure on second read?
Move.
Second, motion, a couple of seconds, roll call, please.
Council member Justin.
Yes.
Council member Paparod.
Yes.
Council member Rebus.
Yes.
Council member Witten.
Yes.
Council member Conover.
Yes.
Council member Biggs.
Yes.
And council member Graham.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Adopt for the two thousand seventeen salary ordinance.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion on the floor, is there a second? Motion is second on the floor, discussion. Roll call.
Dan, if I may?
You may.
I apologize for not sooner mentioning this, but.
Yep.
With, uh, the salary ordinance for two thousand seventeen, I had talked to Vicki earlier today, and I think she had, there was the issue with the sheriff.
Yep.
Salary, uh, I think it's been changed.
But did we pass, did we, I mean, let me ask you this question, so what we approved for the salary for the sheriff for two thousand seventeen, is that what the commissioners approved at their meeting today?
No, well, the.
Not, forget about sixteen for a minute, so about seventeen.
The ordinance that I have here is, is no, but apparently it's been.
But we have revised it also to include my one forty-four that you just approved.
Okay.
So we will revise those two salaries in the two thousand seventeen ordinance.
Okay, so what's the, what's the difference between what we've seen and what you're suggesting?
Well, the only difference is in the sheriff's.
Tell us that.
Uh, and this would be, um, the new salary for two thousand seventeen of a hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars.
Okay. Motion is second, understand that?
One forty-six, three eleven.
Correct.
And what was the other adjustment, Vicki?
Hers.
Mine.
Is that?
No, it was not, because you just approved.
I wanna, I wanna have the accurate information, so tell me what that.
What is it, wait a minute, well, hold on a minute, Mike, so that, but what we did for you doesn't change the bottom line?
No, it does not, it just.
We switched a thousand dollars to each.
And I do have copies in anticipation of you approving it, but.
Alright, so the difference is that the two salaries that we just split, clocked a thousand dollars, and the sheriff's.
Alright, yes. And everything else in the salary ordinance is as you adopted during budget hearing?
But I thought we adopted the higher salary for the sheriff at the budget sessions, we discussed it and did it, what happened?
Can I, do you wanna address that?
No, I want, Vicki.
Okay. You approved the special raise for the sheriff.
Yes.
But that wasn't the raise, because after the budget hearings, uh, several weeks ago, the sheriff's department contacted us in anticipation of this meeting, I believe, and said that there was an error made in the calculation of that increase. So, the amount that you approved was the special raise, but it, but they're amending that special raise.
Okay, hold on, hold on, because that's not what I was told by the commissioners, so let's, let's start this over. I asked two questions, uh, one was, the two thousand sixteen, what did the commissioners approve for the sheriff's contract?
Oh, for two thousand?
And, we're gonna do it in two phases, and I was told that they signed a contract for the, for the sheriff, retroactive to January of this year. My question then, on the back end of hearing that, was, why didn't that come in front of us first? Why would they sign a retroactive contract before bringing it to the council? That was a problem for me, but that horse has apparently left the state.
And that's why I, quite honestly.
And then, so then we got, so no need to comment on that, you're not a commissioner.
But.
But the second part was, two thousand seventeen, I said, what did, what we passed for the sheriff's new salary with the special raise, was that what the commissioner signed for his contract? And I was told yes, but you're telling us the answer is no.
No, I'm sorry, I thought you meant what was approved in the budget.
Okay, so when we, when we passed the sheriff's, alright, go ahead, finish.
Earlier tonight, you did amend the two thousand sixteen salary ordinance when you approved the one forty-four for the sheriff, which was the contract that the commissioners approved today.
But we're not, we're looking at the two thousand seventeen.
Correct, alright.
So let's just stick with two thousand seventeen.
Two thousand and seventeen, you did approve the sheriff's special raise during budget hearing.
Mm-hmm.
After we already submitted the budget to the state, that's when the sheriff's department determined that there was an error in the two thousand and seventeen.
What was the error that they decided that, that they found?
The.
Was it that the calculation of the, of the, as related to the prosecutor's salary and?
Yes, it's my understanding, you know, we pay the prosecutor and the judges five thousand dollars.
Yes.
Out of county funds, the rest of their salary comes from the state.
Right.
And it's my understanding, when the sheriff's department submitted the salary request, they were not taking into account that five thousand dollars.
Five thousand dollars.
As part of that percentage increase.
So that, so that would, that would explain why it had to be retroactive back to January first, twenty sixteen.
That's a different issue. They, here's what the, that's a different issue, because I believe that the sheriff thought that the commissioner signed a four-year contract with him, and I believe that they found out in fact that he, that they had not, that it was a one-year contract, and so that in fact he was not, they did not have a signed contract for two thousand sixteen, so that's when he went back to the commissioners and said, well, surprise, surprise, you only, you only covered me for fifteen, I need a contract for sixteen, which I get that, that's fine. Cheaper for the, the county to have them under contract the way they have them. So that, that's what resulted in the retroactive. The only problem that I had was, why would you sign a retroactive contract that increases someone's salary and not come to the county council first? That was, that's a problem for me, just, in theory, I get why they, I'm not even disputing the sheriff's increase, but the problem is, we're the ones that have to find the money, why would you sign the contract first and then bring it in front of us?
Right, I mean, we could've said no.
Yeah, I mean, that's a, that's a problem. So, anyway, so, so, we're not far off what we approved, correct? I mean, are we fairly close then here?
Yes, yes.
So it was only the, alright, okay, now, now, do we all understand that now, so that?
Yeah.
So his salary is?
One forty-six.
Three, three eleven.
I mean, the process was fine, the only, the only problem with the process is, is that it should've, it should've come to this board first.
Right.
Which is before the contract was signed.
That's right.
If I.
Yes, here.
If I may, Dan.
Yes.
The contract providing or allowing the county to enter into the contract with the sheriff, or the statute providing for that, does also require the signature of the fiscal body as well, so that was provided to me by the, um, by Edie before the meeting, and I have that, and I just wanted to point it out to the, the council as well that they have that here, uh, they've given that to me to, for you to approve as well, and I think that's, I, I just want that, everyone to know before we end the meeting today that that is here as well.
So we'll get to that in a second. So, um, right now on the floor, with a motion and a second, we have the adoption of the two thousand seventeen salary ordinance, you understand the auditor's slight amendments?
Yes, right.
And my, uh, my question is this, the information that we provided prior to the meeting, and with these two adjustments, that's the final answer.
Should be all she wrote.
Yes.
Good question. Okay, so, um, let's get a roll call on this.
Council member Paparod.
Yes.
Council member Rebus.
Yes.
Council member Witten.
Yes.
Council member Conover.
Yes.
Council member Biggs.
Yes.
Council member Graham.
Yes.
Council member Justin.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Thank you. So now, Harold, let's talk about the, the contract.
The statute requires the approval of the fiscal bodies as well, not only just in allocating the funds, but also in approving the contract, and so that is for the council as well, I just wanted to.
And so, anything more, you've, you've read the contracts, I assume?
I have.
And it, other than what we've just discussed, is there anything else in that contract that we need to be aware of?
I don't believe so, the contract mirrors the contract, the previous contracts that the, um, county and the sheriff, uh, the county through the commissioners and the council previously entered into for two thousand sixteen, so no, I don't believe there's even new, uh, I don't believe.
Other than, other than the amount? And then, alright, does anybody have any questions of our attorney before we take action on this contract? Hearing none, can I get a motion?
Move.
You have a motion and a second to approve the contract for the sheriff. Oh, let's get a roll call.
Okay. Council member Rebus.
Yes.
Council member Witten.
Yes.
Council member Conover.
Yes.
Council member Biggs.
Yes.
Council member Graham.
Yes.
Council member Justin.
Yes.
And council member Paparod.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
So next thing on our agenda is budget minutes. What budget minutes do we have ready?
Uh, the budget minutes that I understand that are, uh, ready are previous budget minutes from, um, October twenty-sixth of fifteen, October twenty-second of fifteen, September twenty-second of fifteen, and September twenty-fourth of fifteen, uh, that were previously, um, had not been, been completed and are submitted for the council's approval.
What's your pleasure with these minutes?
Move to approve those meetings that were indicated, and I'd also like to add that we could get them out online as soon as we can, this is a year beyond.
Alright, so motion on the floor, is there a second? I'll second it, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Same sign. Attorney's report, Harold.
I have nothing.
So, alright, other matters at my council and council.
I just wanted, oh, sorry.
Before you go to that, as you know, we're losing one of our members, uh, councilman Paparod.
I'm dying.
And, uh, I've had the pleasure of serving, uh, with, uh, Bob Paparod for, for ten, ten